I was looking at that.
One second, are you ready, Corinne? Are we good?
Okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. John, you wanna do a roll call?
Sure.
Commissioner Cardis?
Present.
Commissioner Cooley?
Present.
Commissioner Douglas?
Present.
Vice Chair, Chris Packick, absent. Chair Shel?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Okay. John, you wanna lay this in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Please stand with your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, thank you for doing that. I love that. Okay, approve order of the agenda. May I approve it? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Okay. Blue folder items supplemental, are there any?
There are. There is one for item 10A. It's for zoning case number 24-074. Copies are made ready for the commission, and I believe we have some copies also for the public.
Isn't that it?
That's all.
Okay, great. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? You're gonna do that, you need to come up and state your name.
My name is Shirley Langer. I'm on 6 Possum Ridge Road, and I have a guest house. Well, whatever, it's connected all under one roof, and there's a hole in the window, and it looks like a BB gun. I have pictures of it, and I don't know how and where and what, but it's a hole.
So this probably isn't the body to take up there. We deal with building and things like that, but John and Stephanie and the other people here can help you with that, if you contact them.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not good.
No, I think it might have been a rock, but my partner here says it wasn't because it made a complete hole all the way through.
Some little kid out hunting squirrels. Yeah, but they'll help you if you contact them. Thank you. Consent calendar, 7A approval affidavit of posting for the Planning Commission regular meeting of October 15th, 2024. 7B approval minutes for the September 17th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll move to approve items 7A and 7B.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Perfect. Excluded consent calendar items, none. Public hearings on items continued from previous meeting, none. New public hearings, this is zoning case number 24-074. This is for 2 Possum Ridge Road. John, you wanna give us an overview?
Sure. 2 Possum Ridge Road, okay. This project is at 2 Possum Ridge Road. It's zoning case number 24-074. It's for a site plan review, conditional use permit, and variance. The subject property is located in the center part of the city of Rolling Hills. It's at the corner of Portuguese Bend Road and Crest Road East. This shows a vicinity map. That thousand-foot radius is the radius that we use to mail out notices to residents within that area. We also published a public hearing notice in the Daily Breeze on October 4th. Subject site there is shown in yellow, and as you can see, you have Possum Ridge Road that traverses the subject site right down the middle. So it's all of this property here. Developed portion is on the west side, which is in this location. There's the vacant portion on this side. You have Portuguese Bend Road at the very end over here. Crest Road is on the south, and again, Possum Ridge traverses the site right down the middle. This shows the vicinity map, the proximity to adjacent structures. To the north, that property is about 290 feet away. Property to the east is over 600 feet away across Possum Ridge and Portuguese Bend Road from the main residence. Properties to the south across Crest Road West are over 200 feet away, and the property to the west is over 200 feet away. The property is zoned RES 2, two acres minimum. The net lot area is 3.5 acres, which is 151,000 square feet. The existing residence was constructed in 1949. There were additions and other structures built after that with significant improvements made in 1970s. Currently, it's developed with eight buildings and a generator. Phase 1 was approved earlier this year, and they issued a grading permit and demolition permit, and they're currently doing that work now. A little bit about the project background. Again, there is a main residence on the subject property, 3,000 square feet roughly, originally built in 1949. There is an extension done in the 70s, detached garage in '75. Farmer equipment, stable and loft according to permit records was built in 1994 for about 1,890 square feet. And there's also two detached storage sheds built in the 50s and 70s, and the closed cabana, which is 225 square feet, and a transformer or generator located behind the structures. On April 16th, the Planning Commission reviewed zoning case number 23-150. That was for a site plan review for a 2,570-square-foot addition to the existing residence for a total of 6,230 square feet. Also included were 980 square feet of attached covered porches, plus a 1,950-square-foot basement divided into two areas. There were 640 square feet of attached garage, and overall, the total was 9,800 square feet. The height of the residence was 18 feet 9 inches. There was a 1,200-square-foot swimming pool proposed behind the residence, 170-square-feet outdoor kitchen, kinda in that same location attached to the residence, a 335-square-foot fire pit located to the north of the swimming pool. They were looking to expand the driveway, making the width 20 feet with a motor court about 32 feet. And that was a circular motor court, so they had a tree planter in the middle of that motor court. There was also landscaping, which included some screen trees, a vineyard, and orchard. A conditional use permit was required, but that was actually removed and set aside for Phase 2, and the Phase 2 project is what you're looking at tonight. But along with that Phase 1 project, there were variances included, which included the encroachments into the front yard and the rear yard setbacks. The northern portion already encroaches into the front yard setback, so really, anything added to that residence in that location would also encroach. Swimming pool encroaches 50 feet into the rear yard setback, and there were commissioned found that there were hardships due to the configuration of the lot traversed by Possum Ridge Road. So it is an unusual configuration. In terms of the coverage disturbance and grading, the first column there was the pre-Phase 1, so prior to the project that the Planning Commission approved earlier this year. That project being Phase 1, and that's where the additions to the residence were located. That's this column here. What the commission is looking at tonight is a Phase 2 project, which includes a new tennis court, new barn, and a conversion of the existing barn into a mixed-use structure. The totals of the project are located on the right column. Total grading is 8,000 cubic yards. Structural lot coverage is about 13%, which is under the 20% maximum. Flatwork is about 11%. Total lot coverage, which includes the structural work and any flatworks, including the driveway, is 24%, which is under the 35% maximum. The total disturbed area is 48.56%. The maximum is actually 50% when you consider that if the slopes, half of the slopes being created are less than three to one, three to one or less. The residential building pad comes out to about 31%, which is a little bit above the maximum guideline. Stable 2, where the pad 2, where the stable is located, is about 41%, 42%, which is above the maximum guideline. This shows the site plan. This is the Phase 1 project that was proposed. Those yellow areas show the setback requirements. Possum Ridge traverses the site right down the middle, and so there are two front yard setbacks, one on the west side, the other one on the east side of Possum Ridge. Those setbacks are 50 feet wide. The rear yard setback is opposite the front yard, so those are located in these locations here, which is also 50 feet wide, and this location here, and everything else is the side yard setbacks. So those are 35 feet. You can see under Phase 1, there are some structures here that encroach into the rear yard setback and also into the front yard setback, and that's why the project required a variance. For Phase 2, what they're proposing are the structures down below over here. They have the stable located on the western side of, I'm sorry, the eastern side of Possum Ridge Road in this location. This is where they were proposing the tennis court originally. They decided not to do that at the advice of the commission. They're now proposing the stable on the east side of Possum Ridge. They're proposing a new tennis court on the west side of Possum Ridge, and the existing stable, they're looking to convert that into a mixed-use building for recreation and to be used as a guest house. And so this is really your Phase 2, the stable, the sports court, and the conversion of the existing stable building. Variance is required because the sports court is located in the front yard setback as well as the stable, and the stable also encroaches into the rear yard setback. So these require conditional use permits. The stable requires a conditional use, the existing stable requires a conditional use permit because it's being converted into a mixed-use building. This is the grading that was proposed on the Phase 1, approved by the commission earlier in the year, and this is the Phase 2 grading for the stable and tennis court. I should mention that this portion here was approved by the Traffic Commission. It's a driveway. It's a gravel driveway leading to the proposed stable. That portion of that driveway does encroach into the RHCA roadway easement, and so that would have to be reviewed by RHCA. This shows an up-close plan of the proposed sports court. It's gonna be 6,000 square feet total. Existing stables will be converted again. The loft area will be removed, and the roof line, it will match the existing roof line down below with that loft removed. Ultimately, the mixed-use building's gonna be lowered. I have another diagram later on, but it'll be lowered by about five and a half feet. The proposed barn located on the east side of Possum Ridge is 3,380 square feet, and that includes an 800-square-foot loft. So this shows the stable, the existing stable being converted over to rec room and guest house. This is the existing floor plan here. They're looking to remove the partitions and then convert that over to the 1,075-square-foot rec room and guest house. They're also looking to add 133 square feet in this location there, so that's, that is an addition. Currently, it's just an open area that's covered with the roof, and so they are looking to expand in that area for the little kitchenette to be used for the guest room, guest house and the rec room. This shows the elevations for the mixed-use building. This right there is an outline of the existing loft. They're looking to demolish that and lower the height down, so they're gonna continue on with the roof, the roof gable in that location. Ultimately, it results in a lowering of about 5 feet 6 inches for that building. The roof, or ceiling plate inside that building is about 8 foot 6. So this is a northeast elevation, basically really the front facing the driveway, and then you have the side northwest, the rear, which is the southwest, and then the southeast side elevation. This is where that, the kitchenette is gonna be located, where they're looking to enclose that area. And these are the plans and the elevations for the new stable on the east side of Possum Ridge Road. It's gonna be 3,380 square feet total. There's a total of five stalls. There's a staircase leading up to the loft area above, which is gonna be used for a tack room, which is 800 square feet. The ends are gonna be open to below, so this is actually, I guess, the roof area or ceiling area for the area down below, as well as this area down here on the south side. They do have, because it is a tack room, we do allow for a bathroom to be inside that, the tack room. This on the bottom right shows where the setbacks are located. Again, it does require a variance because it is in the front yard setback and also in the rear yard setback. The total height of the proposed stable is 25 feet. You have lower level in this area, and then of course you have the loft above. So overall, height of 25 feet. We provided this table here to compare stables that have been approved over the years, and so there's a number of stables on there. Very bottom, you have the proposed stable 2 Possum Ridge Road. It's 3,380 square feet total with an overall height of 25 feet. And this really summarizes the previous table. The average height of those stables is about 1,800 square feet roughly, with a height of 18 feet, the high being about 4,000 square feet, low being 200. The proposed stable over 2 Possum Ridge Road is 3,380 square feet, so that's, that is above the average in that table, but below the largest one. The height, average height, it gets 18 feet. The high is 25, the low is 11, and so this really is at the high end at 25 feet. And these are the grading sections. This shows a grading section for the tennis court. The red being the areas of cut, the blue being the areas of fill. They're looking to remove dirt in that area to flatten out the tennis court pad and then put dirt in that area between the, I guess, well, the tennis court and the driveway. The sections are shown above. You have a section that kinda goes this way, showing that it's all cut. They're gonna be removing that dirt in that area there so they can flatten out the area for the tennis court. Section B shows the tennis court roughly, I'd say, I guess, more in this area, north-south. That's showing cut in that location with a little bit of fill down by where the driveway is located. And this shows the grading sections for the stable. Again, the blue being the fill, the red being the cut. They're looking to cut in this area here and then fill in that area there to flatten out the area for the stable. So the sections here show the areas of cut, areas of fill in order to make that pad. The one down below is the driveway section, which is in this area over here. So you have a little bit of cut on one side and a little bit of fill on the other side. That driveway also will be a gravel driveway, but they do have retaining walls in order to support the driveway. And that retaining wall is about this location. It's about 3 feet here, 2 feet, and then it tapers off down to 1 foot and eventually to 0. This shows the landscape plan being proposed, and this is really conceptual. We've forwarded this over to our landscape consultant, who's reviewed the plan, and there were some concerns with this plan. One being that they're showing planting in the RHCA easement, so it's this portion right over here. They're showing trees above the roof ridge. We have a standard condition that we have that no trees can be planted that are gonna grow more than the roof ridge of the house, the residence. And so there are a lot of trees along the southern section shown. Hedges are not allowed. A lot of these are, it's pretty dense vegetation that could create a hedge. Irrigation plan was not provided, so that still needs to be done, and they also need to provide water counts to show that the project meets a water-efficient landscape ordinance. We do have conditions in case the commission is looking to support the project. It's conditions O through S that relate to landscaping, and those are found in pages 28 and 29 of the staff report. It's included in the draft resolution. These are sections for the landscaping. This part over here is where you have Crest Road. This morning at the field trip, we're standing about in this location within the right of way. The property line is actually located close to the fence line right over here. This sort of shows the height of the proposed landscaping. It's gonna be about approximately 4 and 1/2 feet above Crest Road and about 11 feet above the ridge line of the house, which is over on the far right. And they also show the level of the tennis court fencing right over there. And so when you're standing, I guess, on Crest Road over here, what it's showing is that, like, if you're about 5 feet tall, you'd be able to see over the landscaping being proposed at the fence line. And so in terms of community communication, we did notice the project in the Daily Breeze on October 4th. Notices were also sent to residents within the 1,000 feet. We did receive a letter from RHCA. That letter's been included in the blue folder supplemental. Their concerns included impacts of the roadway easement due to the grading and the retaining wall. The RHCA board approval is still required. They had concerns about drainage structures impacting the trail easement. They looked at removing the existing shed and proposed driveway parking from the west side of the property, and concerns about planting and fences in the easements, and so that's included in the supplemental. We also had concerns from the neighbor over at 6 Possum Ridge Road. That letter is included as part of the staff report. The resident was opposed to the sports court, felt that it was incompatible with the rural atmosphere of the community, and because of the high visibility from the roadways off of Crest, Portuguese, and Possum Ridge. And then, of course, we had the previous letter from the resident during the Phase 1 project. The concerns there were the height, drainage, and construction park. When we were out there this morning, there was a lot of construction going on. I kinda noticed on Possum Ridge there wasn't any construction parking going on there. It is a narrow road, and it seemed to me, at least, that construction parking was occurring either on the property or on Crest Road to the south. So in terms of environmental review for the California Environmental Quality Act, we find that it's exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3. It's new construction, and it's for small facilities or structures, including any expressory structures. There are no exceptions to the exemption that applies, and there's no reasonable possibility that the activity will have a significant effect on the environment due to the unusual circumstances. Our recommendation is that the planning commission open the public hearing, receive public testimony, and provide direction to staff and the applicant. We've also included the resolution as part of the staff report in case the planning commission wishes to approve the project tonight, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John from the commissioners?
I have one small question in terms of the barn and the staircase going up to the tack room. I couldn't quite tell if it was laid out on the exterior side or where that staircase is.
So that's?
I can see it on the elevation clearly.
You can see it on the last square.
Yeah, I see it, but I don't see whether it's inside or outside of the.
Yeah, it's gonna be inside. This is the building wall right there, so this is the ground-level floor here. It's gonna be located right over there, and it leads to the upstairs, to the tack room.
My understanding that you can't have an interior staircase for loft and stable. So that's a question I have.
I'm not aware. I believe that we have approved them in the past. I don't know.
Interior staircases?
Interior staircases?
Put an exterior one on my plans, because I thought you could.
Yeah, mine had to be exterior.
I have, I have exterior.
Yeah?
I'll look into that.
It's not supposed to be a two-story.
Okay, if you could look into that, that would be great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, hang on. I'm gonna open it up to the public here in a minute, and you'll get your chance to talk. Okay, so no more questions from commissioners. Okay, so now I'm going to open it to the public. If you'd like to speak, please come up and state your name and address. We'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. Shirley Langer, 6 Possum Ridge Road. I'm still not completely sure where that sports court is gonna be. If it's gonna be on the corner there of Possum Ridge and Crest, or is it gonna be setback further? Is, I just don't wanna.
John, can you bring up the plot map to show where that is?
I just wanna see as I turn in and to see that sports court right in front of me.
And I don't, you weren't at the meeting this morning. We had quite a bit of discussion about the location of that, and we're gonna get more into that here in this conversation.
Portuguese Bend Road is located right here on the right side. Crest Road is down the bottom. Possum Ridge is right over here. This portion here is currently vacant. That's an open field. And then this is where the residence is located. The tennis court's gonna be located right there.
So you've seen the green fence. It's just inside the green fence, and there's pink ribbons around. It's fairly high. That would be the top of the fence, so that's not the floor. That's the top of the fence. But that's kind of where they're proposing it right now.
Oh, okay.
And we're gonna have some discussion on that.
And if you drive by right now, there's a construction fence, and it goes around in this location here. So it's aligned with the.
Is it, is there gonna be, from the last meeting, I wasn't quite sure. Is the road gonna be narrowed at all or made larger, wider?
Well, my understanding, and Kristen is here from the association, but my understanding is they're talking about widening Possum Ridge. So, and she may come up and talk about it. I don't know.
Good idea. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to come up?
Do you have that presentation? Thank you. Perfect. That's our way to make it. All right. I am Megan Campbell. I am the architect for the project and the applicant. And I wanted to thank you guys all for coming out this morning, a lot of really helpful feedback, and I know there's some work to do, but I think we can get there. So I did make a few tweaks today after the meeting, so I wanna go through that and also show some renderings too, because we don't have that as part of the package. So you can kinda see, I think the landscape is really going to help bring it together and shroud a lot of the things. Right now, it's just a fishbowl, and so you can really see all of the development, and everything, I think, looks a lot bigger than it's gonna look and feel once you get the landscape layered in there. So here's just an overall. About half of these renderings have the old proposal, and then the other half have the new court, so. I can point out when we get there. So here's the landscape proposal, which we talked about, that we're looking at bringing it down to just below eyesight of the average smaller person, average adult. So here, I think John went through it pretty clearly. And one thing I wanted to mention, the sport court in this location, or the sport court in the new location, which you'll see next, the 10-foot-high fence is below that red line, which is the ridge line of the house, so we can do planting up to the entire fence, so the whole thing will be shrouded. So you won't see the fence at all. It'll, it'll be planting from the outside. So here is the new sketch that we did. Um, so here is the new sketch that we did. We had talked about, uh, demolishing, uh, the existing stable building, so we can push the court back as far as possible. Um, so I have here, it's being shown at about five feet set in from each of the setbacks, so then we won't be asking, if we go with this direction, we won't be asking for a variance of encroachment into the setbacks, 'cause we're able to stay out of it. Um, I did, uh, make it a full-size court, um, 'cause we were able to fit that now, so, uh, that's a minor change from the previous. Um, no changes to the barn. And then, uh, we're exploring the idea of either doing, um, an ADU or a guesthouse here, um, kind of replacing that use over here, and these red lines are the ADU setbacks, um, but if we need to stay within the, the legal setbacks, if we keep it as a guesthouse, um, there's also room to do that. I just copied the footprint of the stable for reference, um, so just copying this, flopping it over here, um, just for size reference, but this will obviously be finessed into the, the topography. Um, and then this will also, having a building over here, will obviously help shroud the, the court even further, being able to tuck it behind a structure. Um, so here, I'll just flip through some, some of the rendered views. Um, so this is from Crest, kind of right when you turn onto Crest off Portuguese Bend. Um, so here you can see the, the barn peeking up a little bit. Um, and I will mention too, uh, the barn height, the existing barn is at twenty-three-six, um, so the proposed is only a foot and a half taller, um, than the existing, but I think, you know, if we're, we can negotiate that height if, if needed. Um, we did slide the barn down into that canyon, kind of as far as we could, to, to bring it down, um, into the landscape. Um, so here's from the top of, of Possum. And then here's, uh, on Possum at eye height, looking straight at the court. Um, so you can see little hints of it back there, we would have it completely shrouded. Um, and this is also the court in the previous location, so it'll be pushed back even farther. There may be a building here shrouding it too, um, but just to show that, once you layer in that landscape, um, we can really make sure that it's completely hidden. Um, here's the view looking, uh, south, so back towards Crest. And here, we're, we're in discussion with, um, the RHCA about where this fence location is, um, so we know that this fence is not a part of this approval, or that it isn't approved yet, so, uh, we've had one meeting with them where we proposed doing it four feet off of Possum Ridge, um, and it sounded like that was not maybe gonna get approved, so we're now proposing to just put the fence back to where it was, which is about nine feet, um, off of Possum Ridge. It meanders a little bit, um, but plenty of space for, uh, two cars to pass by, and for horse trail. Okay, so this are, um, these are a couple of views from the barn, um, just to give some context of how the barn relates to the property line and the start of the, the upper SIS trail. Um, so here, I don't know if you can see this kind of faint line, um, that's the property line.
So this is Portuguese Bend that you're loo- you're standing on?
This is, yeah, this is standing at the top of Portuguese Bend, right before you turn. Um, so this is the property line right here. Um, the property goes, it's supposed to be the center of Portuguese Bend when it starts, and then it kinda veers off, um, to the left into the canyon. Um, so here's the property line, here's, uh, essentially the beginning of the trail, so the existing fence comes up to about here. Um, so this fence, uh, is shown on the easement line. So here you can see, uh, the trail, the start of it. And this is standing up on Portuguese Bend. And then here's standing on the trail, kinda looking back up at the barn. Um, so, once you start the trail, it, you end up, there's the trail, and then there's a canyon that's pretty heavily planted, um, and then this fence line is back at the easement Um, and this is previous, just for reference. And then, here it is with the landscaping, so it looks a little, a little different with this phase, once we get the landscaping layered in there. You can see the, the peak of the roof over here. And then here it is again, from the side.
Okay. Any questions while she's up here? Okay, well, thank you very much. I, I do appreciate you listening and trying to massage it to get it to where we can hopefully get it approved, so thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. What would a meeting be without seeing you? I mean, really?
You'd almost get to go home and, uh, even feel like you're at a planning commission. I'm Dan Bolton with Bolton Engineering, I'm the civil engineer on behalf of the applicant. Uh, the only thing I wanted to mention, uh, is we had a chance, uh, today to look at the shifting of the court, uh, that was discussed this morning, uh, and we do think it's feasible from a, a grading standpoint, in keeping the same kind of wall heights that are being proposed on the current plans, the three-foot max, two-and-a-half average, uh, we think we'd be able to do that with the, the shifted court that, that Megan just depicted. So that was the only comment I wanted to make, I'm happy to answer any other civil engineering questions that there might be. Burning, you're burning engineering questions.
Any questions for him?
No.
No.
You're off the hook.
Thanks, y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question?
You gotta come up and state your name, but you can come up as many times as you'd like.
Okay, Shirley Langer, Six Possum Ridge Road. Can I ask you, when was the last time we had a, a sports court or tennis court put in, Rolling Hills?
Well, we haven't put in fairly often.
Fairly often?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've lived here over forty years, and when I moved up here, there was a, a moratorium on putting in tennis courts. Barns you can have all over the place, but tennis courts, no. I don't know when that changed and how it changed. Um, just wanna say, it just changes a little bit, the-
It does, and that's why we're very concerned about it, and that's why we're trying to massage it and figure out the best-
And also, you know, I know that you said five feet, the fence, it'll be set down, sort of, so when you're on Crest, you won't really see the court.
Yeah, we're trying to move it away from the corner and back into the property more. That's the dis-
But when people drive by, will they be able to see?
Well, the nice thing about it is that, you know, you've got Crest Road up here, and it slants down like this.
Right.
Right? And, and as you're going up, that grade gets greater as you get farther into their property, right? So the more you can push it back that way, the more you lose sight of the court. So, that's what we're, we're trying to, so when you turn onto your street, it doesn't jump out at you, we're trying to come up with a solution.
I'm just worried about traffic jams and people trying to look and see what's going on over there, you know? A lot of looky-loos and, I guess it's-
They're coming down and shooting out your windows, you, you got bigger things to worry about.
I know, can you believe that? Was it you, was it you?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got my ex-wife up there, and I was coming by to give her my love.
All right, who else?
All righty. Thank you very much. I am Kristin Regg, I'm the manager of the Homeowners Association, um, here on behalf of the board. The association does have plans to improve the accessibility and, um, safety of the road. Um, initially, we were looking into, uh, doing a hammerhead turnaround at the end of the street, that is no longer, um, a feasible option, so now we are back to our original plan to widen the road. So, um, we have to, the original plan was done ten years ago, so we do need to revisit that, um, and so we do want the planning commission to take that into consideration, um, when, um, approving and reviewing this project. With the barn, um, we do have some concerns about the impact on the trail, just to have the massing of the barn on one side, and then the road on the other, and how that, um, will impact riders as well as the grading during construction, um, because that is our main north-south trail that goes up to Crest. The Whitcoms have submitted a license, a request for a license agreement to put fences on the property lines, um, it has, and in easements on, um, a good chunk of the property, and, um, it has not been approved by the board. The board asked them to, um, come back after that property has been developed, or to reconsider some of the, um, requests. The retaining wall that's in the road easement could be an issue with the wi- with the widening, um, and then, uh, also, I just had a question about the guesthouse. I just, I thought that the, um, allowable score footage was eight hundred square feet, so I, I haven't checked lately. Thank you.
So real quick before you leave us, um, we, we read you, the letter that you wrote, I, I had a brief conversation with the architect beforehand, and she had indicated she was over there visiting with you. Obviously, this is good information, they need to take this into consideration, you know, we're trying to figure out how the pieces of the puzzle work, right? And so they have to make you guys happy, because they not only have to get through this body, but they've gotta get through you guys. So, the good news, bad news is, I don't, I don't think we're going to be in a position where we can approve this tonight, so it gives us time to have them go back, kind of massage the, the project, and spend some time with you guys over there, to get you comfort- comfortable as to how, i- if that barn is approved, how they're going to build it, how they're gonna keep that trail safe, how they're gonna make sure that it, it is not too close to that trail, all of that. So, from, from the conversation I had, I, I feel pretty confident they're gonna work with you, and when they come back to us with something, it, you know, and again, I'm speaking out of school because I'm one of four tonight, but, uh, I, I think we've got some time to try to figure it out and make sure that the, that the whole thing comes together and works for everybody. And I mean, y- y- you know, it's only a matter of time before that road does get widened. I mean, you know, the fire department is making our driveways now twenty feet, you know they're gonna, you know, any little roads like this, we're gonna have to correct it. So, you, the prudent thing to do would be to build it with that in mind, so that they're not having to come back and modify it at a later date. So, you know, it's, it's great that you were there this morning, it's great that you've, you know, voiced your issues, and they can work with you to try to figure it out.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming, much appreciated. I know it's a long day for you.
Come on up. Quick thing, guys, our people opportunity. It's Doug Whitcomb, Two Possum Ridge, the owner. Uh, first and foremost, I think this is the greatest city in California, so thanks for, you know, being so supportive of our project, and, and, you know, just being up here and working with all the residents, I think that's, you know, invaluable. I think, uh, Heather, my wife, and I appreciate it, um, and I can't tell you how much it means to, to us to have, you know, discussions about these sorts of things on the, on the site. A lot of cities don't do that, and you spend a lot of extra time, uh, coming up with ideas that end up just going in the trash, so I, I appreciate that for all you guys, so thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate you guys listening and, and trying to work with us to, you know, m- m- make it so that it fits within the rural nature of, of the community.
Absolutely.
And, again, we're not here to try to squash your dreams, we just, we've got some guidelines that we have to work within, and we wanna try to get, um, w- we wanna get you what you want, provided it, it, it fits within those guidelines.
Now, you, you guys have offered some, some real genuine, uh, you know, uh, great advice that, that we really appreciate, you know? We came into this trying to save everything and looking at it from a different angle, and now we're looking at it through a different light, and I think it's, like, as you said from the very beginning, this is gonna be a, a better home, you know, for us forever, so I, I really appreciate that. And I want to address Kristin. Um, Kristin, I just wanna let you know that we're in full support of widening Possum to, you know, twenty feet, a hundred feet, whatever feet we need to make-
Whoa, 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 a hundred feet. Might lose my house lanes there.
But, uh, I, I, we're in full support of, uh, widening Possum, I really wanna make sure that you're aware of that. Uh, we think for the safety of all the residents down, that would be, uh, significant. And so, any thoughtful things we can do to ensure that that's done, um, you're not gonna have any issues from, you know, my family on that, uh, and, and we're, you know, here to help you guys in any way, so that's all I have, so.
Well, listen, we welcome you to the neighborhood, we're, we're happy to have you in the city, we, we want your project to get done, it's gonna be a great addition to the city, so-
I appreciate it.
We'll, we'll massage it, we'll figure it out. Uh, all right, who else? Everybody's worn out. All right. All right, so I'm gonna close the, uh, the public portion, and then let's, let's have a conversation. Sean, you wanna start it off?
Sure. Um, so, do appreciate you guys listening, working with, with us and, and the neighbors to, to make sure that this is the best project it can be. Um, we did see some changes in there, uh, in terms of sports court, but, um, you know, back to my original comment about the, the pieces moved on the puzzle, but the challenges still remain. Um, I think that we're still, both the association, you definitely have to address the association issues that were included in the supplemental, uh, and one of those was the proximity to the trail, drainage, landscaping, uh, et cetera. So, from my view, and again, just one of, of four, we're gonna need to see the, the barn shift, uh, both in kind of stature and, and maybe orientation, but, um, to, to meet the association request, but also to bring it kind of away from the trail and not have that mass, um, as you come upsize, uh, trail, or come downsized trail. Uh, so I think there's some massaging that can be done over there, again, very supportive of barns and, and, um, you know, multi-horse, sizable barns, but we do need to make sure it doesn't stick out. And then, that goes to the, the tennis court as well. The tennis court, for all intents and purposes, is in the front yard, whether you view that as Possum or Crest, and even with significant string- screening and, uh, landscaping, you know, there's, the, the pictures are great, the renderings are great, but it, it never, you know, the, the trees don't perfectly fill out and, and block all these, et cetera. So, uh, the movement that we saw on that rendering, I appreciate, I feel like there's, there's gotta be more to do to tuck that back to that, uh, southwest corner of the property, as Chair Shelf kind of pointed out. That corner is at a much lower grade than Crest, as Crest goes up as it's heading west, and, and would allow us to consider that as a, as a feature if it, you know, becomes less and less prominent to the, the public view from either Crest or Portuguese Bend. I personally don't have an issue with, with moving a, whether it's an ADU or a guesthouse. Uh, I think ADUs are max eight hundred, um, unless you need a two-bedroom, but, um, I, I think the, the residents at large, and again, a lot of them use that intersection, uh, would rather not see a sports court and see a Rolling Hills conforming, guesthouse, ADU, uh, whatever, uh, structure you plan to, to bring. Um, and then again, there's, there's other stuff on here that the associations have that is, um, more tangential to it, but those, those are two things that I'd, I'd love to see, uh, further massaged.
Thank you. I would pretty much echo what two commissioners have said thus far, being able to tuck that sports court where the original old barn is, that's just kind of the corner where it's more private and more, maybe more enjoyable, and your standpoint too, from having your kids play and all that, might be a more enjoyable location down the line, but, um, so that point, I, it's well taken in my mind, and also the barn, um, and the concerns that community association have about placement of the barn, um, I do wanna make sure- I do want to make sure that that stairway is clarified, just so we, just so we know, so we're not having them redesign that. And other than that, the community association queries and definitely getting the Possum Ridge Road figured out for emergency and first, before you have to go back the drawing board several times, seems to make more sense and more cost-effective, so.
Thank you.
No, I completely agree with all three of you. And I was thinking that too, that probably the association things need to be cleared up before you all come back here so that we can, you know, because we can't approve anything until all that's cleared up. But what an amazing project and how fortunate your family is that they're going to get to experience all this. I think that's awesome.
Great, very lucky fellows.
Definitely.
Okay. My, my, I mean, they've laid it all out. My only other comment is seeing the landscaping plan, just, we got to find that happy medium, right? I mean, that's a lot. We got to find the happy medium. So, just, just keep that in mind when you're re-tinkering this thing. Okay, so, I think you can see where the commissioner's head is at. So, we can either take a vote on it right now or we can hold it over till the, the next planning commission meeting. So, you want to hold it over?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, what do we need to do here?
Continue.
Just, do we need to make a motion to continue it?
Yeah, a motion to continue.
All right, Sean, you want to make a motion?
We have to get a plan. Make a motion to continue zoning case number 24-0742, next meeting.
Second?
Great, thank you. You want to do roll call?
Yeah, and just for clarification, next meeting is going to be November 19th, Tuesday. Okay. Commissioner Cardenas?
Approved.
Commissioner Cooley?
Approved.
Commissioner Douglas?
Approved.
Chair Shelf?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Okay, 10B, consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 17.2A of the municipal code regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwellings. John, you want to give us another?
Meeting's not over. Folks.
Is your voice? Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, accessory dwelling units. This is not an ordinance amendment. It could lead to an ordinance amendment, but the reason why this is before you.
For your time.
The reason why the ADU issues before you tonight is because there are a lot of changes to the ADU laws. A little bit of the background, back in 2019, there were some ADU laws that went into effect January, January 1st, 2020. Shortly after that, council adopted ordinance number 364-U and 364 to address those changes. You had AB 3182 in September 2020 and AB 345, September 21st. On August 22nd of 2022, council adopted ordinance number 376 to comply with those bills. And in September 2022, a new bill came that was SB 897. City council adopted ordinance number 381 on, in January 2023 to comply with that bill. And new bills are AB 2533, which is just this year, addresses unpermitted ADUs and JADUs, and SB 1211, which replace, deals with replacement parking requirements and multiple-family ADUs. And so, the proposed ADU ordinance before you is, I'm sorry, ordinance number 385, which addresses AB 2533 and SB 1211. I did, I'm sorry, I wanted to mention, this does deal with ADU ordinance, so I mentioned that maybe at the beginning. It's, it's not just for discussion, it's actually to recommend for this ADU ordinance, but it addresses the new bills.
And, sorry, John, just to clarify, they would be recommending approval of this ordinance to the council?
Yeah. So, this addresses the new bills that were approved this year. As part of the ADU ordinance, we looked through there, and I actually made some changes to the landscape section. I deleted that, that section out of there because there's some new requirements under the fire department dealing with home hardening, where you can't really have plants next to a building. And some of our, our landscaping requirements in that section required like certain number of trees or plants to shield or screen the ADU, and that might conflict with the fire department requirements. There's also concerns of view preservation. Once those, the landscaping gets to a certain height, it starts blocking a view, and that might be a concern for neighbors. But owners may still plant landscaping on their properties, so it doesn't prohibit anybody from, you know, adding, adding additional landscaping when they have an ADU. Some of the other changes made in, in the proposed ordinance is that we add definition for livable space, which is in the staff report. There's some clarification about fees that the city may charge a fee. There's a percolation test needed when septic tank or septic system is being proposed. And there's changes to the owner occupancy requirements. There's no longer requirement on or after January 1st, 2020 for, for complying, complying ADUs. Owner occupancy is no longer required after, after that date. There's a rent reporting requirement that requires the applicant to provide an estimate of the projected annualized rents, and that's really just for the city's purposes in order to keep track of rents in our city. There's changes to the setback requirements to be consistent with existing structures. There's a section there that was deleted, but after rereading that section, it looks like it was incorporated into the, the new language in there. The part that was deleted read that if the front yard setback is the only location on the lot where the, an ADU may be lawfully constructed, then the ADU may encroach into the required front yard setback as necessary to enable the construction of an 800 square foot unit. And so, it's reworded in the ordinance amendment, but I think the gist of it is really still in there. So, there's really, that, that section's been deleted, but again, incorporated into the, the new language. There's language in there regarding windows and doors. You cannot have direct line of sight to adjoining, adjoining properties. The allowed stories is one story allowed, but if it's attached to a primary residence with a basement, then the ADU can also have a basement. In regards to utilities, utilities may not, may need separate, may be separate from the, the main residence, and it's, it can be subject to connection fee, connection and fee requirements of the utility provider. And there's been some minor formatting changes throughout the document. A redline version is included as attachment two, so you can see what changes were made. In regards to the environmental review, we find that it's categorically exempt. California Public Resources Code, section 21080.17, indicates that CEQA does not apply to the adoption of an ordinance by the city implementing ADU law. So, the ordinance is statutorily exempt from CEQA. And our recommendation is the planning commission open the public hearing, receive public testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt resolution, the resolution included in attachment one, which recommends that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance number 385, which is in exhibit A to attachment one, amending Rolling Hills Municipal Code, chapter 17.28 regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and finds that the adoption of the proposed ordinance is statutorily exempt from review under CEQA pursuant to Public Resources Code, section 21080.17. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Reason why this needs to happen quickly, I read somewhere, January 1st, 2025, it, it needs to be, those, those bills or laws are in place, so it has to go to the city council, they're going to have to approve it, and we've got to get this done before.
And if, if it doesn't get done, then the current ADU ordinance would be null and void, and the city would have to rely on state law standards for approvals of ADUs.
Okay, so there's, there's a reason to push it through. Yeah. Any other questions?
I just have a basic question. John, you'll say like ADU or guest house, are they the same things?
No.
I didn't think so.
So, ADU is, like I said, a newer term, and ADUs are meant to be rented out, whereas guest houses, it's a, I guess, an older term used. We used to, we, we still do allow for guest houses, but it's meant to be, I guess, the extension of the main dwelling unit. You're not supposed to rent it out. You can't have a full kitchen. You can have a kitchenette per our code. And so, there's similarities, but I guess the main difference is really you can't have a, full living quarters, meaning you can only have a kitchenette with a guest house, and you cannot rent out, again, a guest house. It's meant for guests or, you know, relatives living there.
The approval process is significantly different.
I can imagine. Well, Kristen had said something, mentioned that guest houses can't be more than 800 square feet, and I was thinking, well, that's an ADU. So, I wasn't sure.
The guidelines for ADUs come from the state. It's, it's mandated. It's very different.
Yeah, that's why I, I assumed they were two different things, but then I got confused.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, thank you, John. No more questions. I'm going to open it up to the public. If you'd like to state, come up, speak, state your name, address. Seeing none, I'm going to close that, and the commissioners can discuss it, okay?
I've read through the changes, and it's required. I'm prepared to.
Yeah, if anybody objects, let's just get it approved.
I think that's our only option.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'd like to propose that we find that the, the proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA and adopt the resolution 2024-13 and send to the city council for approval.
Perfect.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Cardenas?
Approved.
Commissioner Cooley?
Approved.
Commissioner Douglas?
Approved.
Chair Shelf?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Old business, I'm assuming we don't have any new business. 12A, discuss, discussion on building heights.
Okay, so, building heights, yeah, this is, this is a discussion, one. The other one was a public hearing for an ordinance, but this is a discussion that we're bringing before you. The purpose for this discussion is that we've had recent conversations about, concerns about the city's height limitation. The height limitation is found in Rolling Hills Municipal Code, section 17.16.080. In subsection A, general limitations, it states that a building or structure shall have no more than one story, meaning that there shall be no story on top of another except in specified in subsection B below. And I'll get to that in a minute, and it goes on to talk about, when you have a, a floor, how high a floor can be from, from existing grade, which is five feet with a two and a half feet average. So, section B there, that's the exception section to section 17.16.808. It gives exceptions to basements, stables, and storage areas. And for each of those basements, we, we do allow for multiple basement levels. I know there's at least one house that does have multiple basements, but those are the levels below grade, below the first story of the primary residence. Those are generally underground, but we do allow for the walls to be above ground, up to five feet above finished grade, provided there's an average of two and a half feet, so not the entire basement is above grade. The other exception is in regards to lofts. So, we do allow lofts to, to be put into stables, and only, stables only. And in that loft, you can't have a tack room with a bathroom, which is allowed. So, that's the only time that you would see, I guess, a second story or something that appears to be two stories is with that loft for, for a stable. And then, the third exception to that is a storage area. And storage areas are allowed in the attics for storing items, and you cannot, that area cannot be livable. So, we do have some attic spaces in our city for our homes where, which are pretty large. I think the concern is really that, that if you make them, make that attic area really large, then there's a possibility that they may be converted into, to livable, which we don't allow. We've included this stable comparison, this is included in the, one of the previous items, but this shows a comparison of stable heights, the last project there being at 25 feet. And in terms of the height, the average height on that table is about 18 feet. The high was 25 and the low was 11. And in regards to structural heights, these show single-family residences. So, you can see on some of these homes that were approved more recently, 29 Eastfield approved at about 13 feet. You have 14 feet, 17 feet. It looks like the higher ones here are, or the Four Poppy Trail, which has a cupola at the very top, which is plus 24 feet in height, and then it goes down to about 13 feet at the, the low end. The one that you just saw at Two Possum Ridge, that's at 18 feet, nine inches for the phase one, the main residence.
Existing, is that what you're saying? Or the, the proposed?
The proposed, well, the addition, the one that you approved earlier this year.
They moved it, they, they lowered it.
Okay.
Right, it actually went, like, it's over to the RHCA, and they, they get some modifications to that.
Brought it down.
This shows some of the other uses. You have detached garage and other accessory uses. So, over at 9 Portuguese Bend Road, they have a garage, detached garage, which is 13 feet high, and ADU, it's about 14 feet. Four Poppy Trail, that's an ADU, it's about 15 feet high. There's a pool house over at 19 Portuguese Bend Road, it's about 12 feet high. A potting shed, 12 feet high over at 18 Eastfield. There's a 14 foot, 8 inch pool house over at 21 Chuck Wagon, an ADU, that's 12 feet high over at 23 Chuck Wagon, and 13 foot, 13 and a half foot stable over at 29 Crest Road West. This is just a section example. That lower level there is a basement, so that's all underground. There's a light well located on the left side there, leading up to the upstairs, the ground level floor. This right here is a ground level floor, which, which has a plate height with a ceiling of eight feet tall. And in this example, they have a storage area there that's about six feet tall. The overall height, when you look at it from the outside, from the finished grade to the very top of the ridge line, is 18 feet, nine inches. And this is the example for that, that went over to RHCA, that was lowered. So, our recommendation is that the planning commission discuss if height requirements in the code are adequate or if they need to be revised, or if the commission does have the ability to make any recommendations and provide direction to staff.
Okay. Any questions? So, let me, let me give a little color on this. I reached out to John, and as, as we're approving these new projects, they're getting taller and taller, right? And so, felt that we should try to strengthen what our recommendations, our guidelines are to try to help us that these things don't continue to, to, to grow. So, what we'd like to do is recommend to John that he do some research. We make a public notice, and then we start to have dialogue and discuss this, so we can then put a recommendation together for city council. So, so my recommendation would be that, yes, this is something we should discuss, and we should give John our approval to, that, that this is something we want to talk about. So, I, I'll make a recommendation that, that this is something we should pursue and get on the calendar at some point in the near future.
Give me a second.
Sure. Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is that good enough? Perfect. All right, thank you, John. That's fantastic. Do we have any field trips?
None at the moment. I don't know if we have anything that's.
Well, just let us know. We'll get it. If we, if we have to change it, we will. Items from staff?
The only item I have, we're, we're approaching the, the end of the year now, and it looks like we have some terms. The only item I have, we're, we're approaching the, the end of the year now, and it looks like we have some terms that are, are coming up. Actually, just one term.
Tell me it's me.
Commissioner Cooley. So.
Going anywhere.
I.
You're not going anywhere.
I am going. I.
Yeah, that's, that's the only one. We will have to run that by city council and do that process. I've already talked to the city clerk about that, but before the end of the year.
Doc, yeah.
That's all right. Brian will guilt you into staying.
If I'm, if I have to stay, you have to stay. This is a danger to serve. Okay, any items in the planning commission?
Nope.
Okay. We are adjourned till Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six-thirty. I am leaving this for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Great job.
Always nice to have these really well-put together.
I will. That's right. Well, you know, you need a break, and this is.